Greetings from the new Simply Hearing. Like everyone, we've made a lot of changes. We've always loved telling you about the teamwork and rapport that you find here, but now, for the sake of medical safety, we offer four types of services by appointment only. There's lots to be happy about with a new, more precise appointment plan made just for your needs. We also have a new, more transparent pricing structure. Start your path for better hearing and better life.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
On the open session in order, and I'm going to announce that we're going to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining with the police unions. And I declare as chair that not to go into an executive session would hurt our position in the town, and it's essential. So is there...
Second.
I make the motion second. All those in favor go on executive session?
Aye.
Do we have to do a roll call now?
I guess not, but we have Nancy there, so...
Nancy, we're going to go into executive session. Is there a vote to approve?
Taylor, aye.
Okay.
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. Very good. Thank you. Welcome, this is the open session of November 22nd, 2021. This board has just returned from executive session where we ratified and approved the collective bargaining agreement between the Police Patrol Union and the Police Lieutenant's Union. And I'm happy to announce that it was come to agreement without mediation, well in advance of the expected deadline, I believe. Correct?
I would say that's fair.
Yeah. So that's really good news, and I'm very happy to see the stuff that's in there. And it's something that we talked about, trying to make our department more attractive to police officers. And I think it's very, very well done. Thank you. And so, in a call to order, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So for recognition, Ms. Anjalee Scott Price?
Yes, I have two recognitions. One, Carla Ferroni, who is our housing coordinator, is leaving us. She'll be sorely missed, but I wanted to recognize all the work that she's put in over the four years that she's been here and the about two years that I've had the pleasure of working with her directly before coming to this board. And she's done a lot of really good work to support affordable housing and make sure that we do it right in our community.
She really has put us on the path that we're on now.
She has, yeah. And then, related, I wanted to thank all the town meeting members for voting in favor of all of the articles that we put forward for affordable housing. There was presentations prepared, remarks prepared, and they were not needed, which was really exciting. So, thank you to all the town meeting members who voted in favor.
I agree with that. That was very nice. I'd like to make a mention of an email we received from a lady over on Fresh River Lane this week about a coyote that's been harassing her little dog. And I know, I've been reading lately that some people have been feeding coyotes and foxes and thinking that's a good idea. It's really not a good idea. Up in Dennis, they've been having a real problem with coyotes actually attacking people because there's been people up on the beaches up there leaving food out and feeding these coyotes, and they become habituated to humans. And once they think of you as a food source, if there's not food, you become the food. So, I hope people will refrain from feeding the coyotes and just try to be conscious of the fact that they're here too. They're not going away.
And they are part of the balance in the community. I know Anjalee was just talking about rabbits foraging on her attempt to raise a garden. You know, I know in my neighborhood, I can tell when the coyotes have come into the neighborhood because the rabbit population goes down. And my wife's flowers and our garden plants are somewhat safer as a result of it. So, they serve us in that regard, and we shouldn't be thinking of them as strictly predators. They are part of the balance of our community's nature.
And half the town is woods, so it's half their town, too. Announcements, Mr. Suso, regarding Christmas?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to confirm, the upcoming annual event, a much-awaited Saturday, December 3rd, essentially at dusk, it will be the annual lighting of the town common for the holidays, and much anticipated and well-attended. Then there also is the walk opportunity along with among the merchants on Saturday afternoon and into the evening hours as well. Again, that's Saturday, December 3rd. On Sunday, December 4th, is the town's annual, in this case, back-to-in-person Christmas parade, which steps off at 12 noon, again, on Sunday, December 4th. So we'll look forward to the return of those two annual events. Thank you.
And so now, is public comment, if anyone's here to make public comments this evening? Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just take this opportunity to introduce the Second Annual Fall Townwide Falmouth Litter Event. It's our second annual event, obviously. The first one was a tremendous success. We had over 157 volunteers sign up. We're doing it again this Saturday, excuse me, Saturday and Sunday, December 4th and 5th, or really, any day you wish to pick up litter in the town of Falmouth. You can do it anywhere. You can do it on your road, or any other, your neighborhood, conservation recreation land, beaches, business districts, wherever litter can be found. And all of us can do it. All of us can be part of Litter-Free Falmouth, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Litter-Free Falmouth. For more information, we provide a email site, mesohc@yahoo.com. And you can find us on Facebook at LFF. I'd like just to add one other observation over the last almost two months now, that the NIP sales ban has been in effect in Falmouth. A number of people have come up to me and says, has told me they're seeing so many fewer NIPS on our streets. So, we want to thank, want to thank you, the board, for your support. We want to thank town meeting, I guess it was the Spring 2020 Town Meeting, last September. And it's really making a difference. And I hope that we all can keep it up and reduce the other elements of litter. We're certainly seeing progress. Thank you.
And Alan, just to clarify, almost any other road except, don't get out on the highway unless you have an escort?
Yes, certainly Route 28. We have an adopt-a-highway program on the four-lane portion of it, and you can become part of that. But you need to go through a whole safety program before, a very short but important safety program before that. And the same thing applies for the other busy roads. Pick roads, do it safely, always be aware of traffic.
Very good. Thank you, Alan.
And wear a bright garment of some kind.
Bright garments. And in fact, we will, we'll have information, if you do register, there'll be information on yellow bags that the town has provided for us, that are the best litter bags around. And we'll have a certain amount of safety vests, and really, bright clothing is very, very important. Thanks, Sam.
Good. Thank you, Alan. All right. Any other public comments this evening? Yes, Mr. Fenneren.
Mark Fenneren, and I just want to kind of piggyback on Alan's comments and also congratulate him for winning the Cape Cod, whatever it was, Mr. Litter Cape Cod. But, I mean, he's really worked hard the last couple of years, and Barb as well, and a bunch of other people, and you can see the difference in this town. And if you don't notice now, just keep it in your mind, once you get past 151, to look at the side of the highway, and especially when you get up into Bourne, it's a night and day difference. I mean, there's, and it's, well, I grew up in Vermont, I hate litter. You can look at the inside of my car, and you can tell that, but he really needs our congratulations. And I mean, just look around, and you'll notice.
I have, and I do agree.
Well, I thought you were the chair, so you could...
Oh, I am.
I just, I want to take the opportunity to wish everybody a great Thanksgiving from all of us. I think by the time we get around to our individual select board members, everybody's going to be asleep.
Yeah. But not tonight, because our agenda's relatively short. We did put off a few things because we're a little bit shorthanded tonight. So now, for summary of actions, we have licenses, approval, request to extend seasonal all-alcoholic common victual license until January 2nd, 2022, from the Landfall Restaurant at 9.00 Muskamhave Woods Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, or all those in favor?
Aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Aye. Nancy, what do you say?
Taylor, aye.
Okay. Thank you.
You might even announce her.
Yeah, I just want to let you know Nancy Taylor, Dr. Nancy Taylor, is participating remotely as per our recently-approved remote participation rule that we put in place. And next is number two, is administrative orders, approve ever-source petition to install approximately, maybe take this off for this. Approve 30 feet of conduit and cable under Town Road east of West Avenue, and one new handhole, number 304/4A on Grove Street in Falmouth. This work is to be done to provide electric service to 53 Grove Street. Is there a motion to approve?
As recommended by the engineering department, I move approval.
All right.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Taylor, aye.
Thank you.
I think we do need roll call votes for...
Okay.
All right. We'll go back to that.
I think you have to do it.
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
And Taylor.
Taylor, aye.
Thank you. And next is vote to adopt an order of taking of Winthrop Drive East Side, as authorized by November 2021 Town Meeting. Finally getting this done.
I move that we approve that, as it's been outlined. And do we need a special? No, that's a different article.
Okay. Scott Price, second.
All those in favor, by roll call?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Thank you. And next is approve a grant of license to Nando and J. Marquetar and Jean M. Marquetar to maintain encroachments onto Grand Ave at 159 Grand Ave, Falmouth. And I trust everyone's seen the plan that was presented in the packet. It's a very minor encroachment of a bit of walkway that just touches the edge of the roadway layout, as well as the cobblestone driveway entrance.
I might say that I think we have a lot of these, they were not intentional throughout town. People have put in stones or fences and didn't realize where the edge of the roadway was. And I think many times, I can't, I don't want to over, you know, simplify. No, I don't want to overextend this, but many times, it really does enhance the rest of the town, you know, because people have used these things for ornamental purposes or for, to make something look a little more historical, much like the town was, you know, 150 years ago. But appreciate the fact that people are trying to do the right thing and are coming forward to get these kind of licenses in place.
Well, I think we just didn't really used to pay close attention to it, but every time now there's a zoning board or zoning board action on a property, they pick up on it. And so, one by one, we're going to be picking them off, I guess, but really, it's like the majority of town has paper and said encroach at the roadway, so there's going to be a lot of these.
I move approval.
Scott Price, second.
And all those in favor, by roll call?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
And next is approve a grant of license to Sapec Investments LLC to maintain encroachments at 16 Worcester Court, Falmouth.
Did we miss Aspen Holdings?
Oh, excuse me, I guess I did. That's a grant of license to Aspen Holdings LLC to maintain encroachments at 203 Walker Street, Falmouth.
I move approval.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Thank you. And now, we'll go to approve grant of license to Sapec Investments LLC to maintain encroachments at 16 Worcester Court, Falmouth. Any questions or concerns with that one?
No. I move approval.
Scott Price, second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Thank you. And next is approve regulatory agreement for affordable housing development, McGansett Crossing LLC, located at 676 North Falmouth Highway.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, please.
So this is a fairly boilerplate agreement that is part and parcel of the so-called LIP, the Local Initiative Program for the McGansett Housing, McGansett Crossing Affordable Housing, which the LIP itself was approved by the Select Board a number of years ago. The board has also seen this project more recently for funding and has voted approval of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. So this is really sort of just an administrative, ministerial approval of an agreement that has been reviewed by special counsel on behalf of the town.
Yes. Welcome, Mr. Glossel. How are you tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much here this evening to answer any questions you may have regarding the regulatory agreement. But just as important, I'd like to echo Anjalee's comments about Carla and the work that she's done for us, not only for myself and my project, but for my fellow affordable housing developers, you know, Karen at Falmouth Housing Trust and Linda, too. And she'll be sorely missed. And not only that, but the work that she did on the working group that really led up to the approval of the three articles at Town Meeting last week, we couldn't have done it without her help. I'm at a very critical part with this project right now. You have an agreement in front of you tonight. We are trying to break ground before, before Christmas and the end of the year, and I just have a little bit of concern about, you know, who's going to fill in for Carla at this point in time, and whether or not there's any opportunity, and I know obviously up to the town manager's office, that she might be able to extend her stay, maybe on a part-time basis, possibly till the end of the year. So I want to thank you for all your support you've given to our project. Again, I want to thank Carla very much, and just let you know that we're just getting ready to start construction on this project. We still have a few more agreements that need to be reviewed by the town, and hopefully we can close on all our funding before the end of the year. So, thank you.
And, Mr. Suso, is there any possibility of some outreach to Ms. Ferroni to see if she might be...
Well, we're in contact with her, it just wouldn't be appropriate to be discussing personnel issues on the Select Board formally in their agenda.
Certainly.
But, yeah, we are in touch with Carla, most appreciative of her work, and we'll have a process in place going forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I think it's outside of our scope. I don't think it's appropriate to discuss any part-time positions or any personnel issues.
Okay.
So I echo Mr. Suso's comments.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments or questions about the agreement?
No, I move approval.
There is a statement there that needs to be made.
Acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, I move approval of the regulatory agreement for affordable housing development, McGansett Crossing LLC, located at 676 688 and 702 North Falmouth Highway.
Patterson, second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have vote retroactive approval of application for mass wildlife climate change resilience grant opportunity to fund habitat improvement project. And I saw the information outlined in the packet, it's all very clear. I noticed that part of the, one of the comments was that there's no actual available company to do the controlled burning, that they identified somebody from New Jersey which could do it. But I just wanted to mention that the county did recently buy out all the equipment to do controlled burn, and they have the equipment, and I believe they have some personnel, so just another option that might be considered if the New Jersey thing doesn't work out. Okay. Thank you. And is there a motion to approve this?
Sure. I move that we approve the town's application for the grant funding of $20,587 to implement the Coona Mesa Fields Mass Wildlife Habitat Management Grant Project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Very good. Next, we have a fee hearing to discuss and vote to establish and promulgate fees for 2022. And I noticed as part of the fee hearing that we had, the Beach Committee recommendations seem to be pretty much in line with the fees that we have in here, so I was happy to see that.
I might mention this was noticed in the enterprise.
Yep. Thank you. And this was, I don't see the date of publication, oh yeah, Monday, November 27th. Well, it's the enterprise notice, but I don't see the date of publication. As provided under Chapter 119 of the Code of Falmouth, a public hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, November 22nd, 2021, at 7:30 PM, to establish and promulgate fees which are effective as of January 1st, 2022, to be charged by town departments and agencies, except as provided by Mass General Law, School Department, Planning Board, Library, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, and Collector of Taxes. Proposed changes are listed below, and they're all listed in the enterprise.
How would you like to proceed on this, by different departments? Or can we do a blanket vote for all of them?
I did have a question.
Sure. Go ahead. What is it?
Trying to get to my notes. I think it was a question about the beach parking for motorcycles. I recall that at the Beach Committee, there was a suggestion, and I'm wondering if each motorcycle gets their own parking space, or if there's multiple motorcycles going into one parking space?
They, they do take up a space, and it's been noted by the committee that it's a mystery why it hasn't been charged all this time, because they do take up space.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that they get a whole space themselves, so if they're paying for a space, they get a whole space.
Could you clarify that, Ms. Clayton?
Sure. Maggie Clayton, acting Beach Superintendent for the town. The motorcycle proposal was brought forth by our Beach Committee in discussion that current practice is motorcycles are let in without a sticker because they are placed in a space that is not a legal space, as that can be cumbersome when there are not staffed hours, and as there are motorcycles that are built wide enough or large enough to be comparative to a, to a vehicle. If we were to take on this fee, then it would be one motorcycle or motor vehicle per legal parking space in the parking lot.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I would hope that we would support that recommendation. I think they should be in a legal spot, and they should be charged accordingly.
I agree. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Suppose you had, you know, two motorcycles arriving together, and you were concerned about consuming the parking lot. Would you allow them to share a spot, since it seems like they could be diagonally parked in there? I'm just looking to find out if there's any...
I, I will have to come back to this board to update our sticker eligibility rules to go over the fine points of how we will implement the motorcycle plan. I believe that if there was a party with multiple vehicles that chose to share a spot, we could either have a designated supervisor be allowed to make that decision... we could either have a designated supervisor be allowed to make that decision or we, it could be at the discretion of the patron. But if it's a daily fee, it's a ticket as opposed to a sticker. If it is a sticker, we have to deal with where it goes on the vehicle so that it can be noticed by our attendants.
Thank you.
Are there other parking spaces in town where two motorcycles park in one space?
None that I'm aware of.
I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure that it's a good idea that we, we sort of bog and weave on that. I think they've recommended that they have a legal space and that they'd be charged to be in that space.
All right.
Makes sense.
All righty then. Any other questions or comments? I think we'd go by department.
Okay.
And I see we have Chair of the Beach Committee. Did you want to make any comments before we, yours, Beach Department is first.
We would just like to express our thanks for your approval of these recommendations. As you know, we made a presentation and present this to the Board and to the, Mr. Susso and Assistant. Also, in regards to the motorcycles, it's, the committee brought this on. It's a new policy that's going to be in place. It's got, it has a little bit of homework to be done, but again, it was another way to bring revenue to the town. And we'd like to also acknowledge the fact that we did not raise resident stickers this year or raise the price of swimming lessons. We strongly believe that that's important. And again, through the hard work of Maggie Clayton supporting our efforts, we'd like to publicly thank her. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the Beach Department fees as recommended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price aye.
Patterson aye.
Brown aye.
Taylor aye.
All right. And next, we have Health Department. Postal Works Construction and Maintenance Permits.
I move approval of the Health Department new fees.
Patterson second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price aye.
Patterson aye.
Brown aye.
Taylor aye.
And next, we have Marine Environmental Services, Harbor Master, Waterways, Moorings. Is there anyone here that's here to make public comment on any of these? I should have asked that before we went on to the voting. All right. Very good. Thank you. Marine Environmental Services, Harbor Master, Waterways, Moorings.
I move we approve the fee structure as recommended from Marine and Environmental Services, Harbor Master, Waste, Waterways, Moorings.
Scott Price second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Scott Price aye.
Patterson aye.
Brown aye.
Taylor aye.
Very well. Next, we have Marine Environmental Services Shell Fishing License.
So, just to be clear, this is removing any fee for commercial or full-time student license?
Correct. It takes a hundred and fifty dollar fee away for a commercial full-time student.
And just to be clear, is full-time student K through twelve or does that include college students as well?
I think college students are included as well.
That'd be my understanding.
Okay. And I move approval of the Marine and Environmental Services Shell Fish Licenses Fee.
Harbor Master is here in case there's a question about that application.
Patterson second, but I would like to have a Harbor Master address that question.
The, the student fee for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, we're keeping the commercial fee as one from here on out, so it'll be three hundred dollars across the board.
Okay. Thank you.
So, there is a fee for commercial fisher, shell fishermen. It's not being eliminated. It's just the old.
I'm glad we clarified that.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that was obvious so we didn't have people running down there.
All right. So, I would entertain a motion on.
I'm motioning.
We already have a motion.
We have a motion. Things just matter.
Ready to vote. All those in favor?
Scott Price aye.
Patterson aye.
Brown aye.
Taylor aye.
Thank you. And the last is the Recreation Department for use of the gym, youth hockey, archery, volleyball.
I did have a question about this one.
Okay.
If, I wanted to know if there was some sort of sliding scale or options for low-income students who wanted to participate in these things.
All right. Recreation Director Joe Lenick is here.
Hi, Joe Lenick, Recreation Director. I didn't quite hear the question.
The question was, is there some sort of sliding scale or options for perhaps low-income families?
For, for low-income, we have a policy where is the school, just the council sends us a recommendation for a waived fee. So, we let any child that needs the waived fee into the, any of the programs, either soccer or basketball, summer camp. And we take, we try to take a maximum of five kids per school, but we've never said no to anybody that needs it.
Great. Thank you.
Excuse me, Joe, while you're there.
Thank, thank you, Joe.
Yeah. How about not-for-profit youth groups?
It's kind of up to my judgment, if somebody comes in and they're a nonprofit and they have a program, I usually will not charge them to, to use the building because it's for the kids. And that's why we're there.
Yeah, just avoiding conflicts, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I move approval of the Recreation Department fees.
Patterson second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price aye.
Patterson aye.
Brown aye.
Taylor aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
And next, we're on to discuss and vote to adopt speed regulation on Wild Harbor Road, North Falmouth, a thirty mile an hour proposed speed limit from Old Main Road to Lauren Road. We have Patricia Johnson, who originally brought this concept forward. Yes, I do. Welcome.
I'm Patricia Johnson from North Falmouth. I was the petitioner who asked for this presentation. My goal in this presentation is to get safer roads on Wild Harbor Road. I'm interested in not only dropping the speed limit, but adding some other safety I, things for, let me get my glasses on. All right, I've lived on Wild Harbor Road or owned property that abuts Wild Harbor Road for almost, since nineteen sixty-three. I, I was probably the instigator in the last police review that resulted in the thirty-five mile speed limit determination. I have, that was in the early twenty, two thousands. I think it was two thousand and three. In preparation for this discussion, I drove many miles in Falmouth and recorded where and what speed limit signs were up. There is a lot of inconsistency. I'm sure everybody here knows that. I was surprised actually how many streets had no speed signs, like Surf Drive, Chappaquoy Road, County Road, and long sections of Carriage Shop Road, Acapexic Road, and Davisville Roads. Some streets that I felt were similar to Wild Harbor Road, like Oyster Pond Road from Woods Hole Road to Surf Drive or Shore Street, already have thirty mile an hour signs. I saw thirty-five mile an hour signs on Burkham Road and on most of Quaker Road. I even observed a twenty mile an hour yellow speed sign on County Road and I had, and like everybody else, I saw several signs to remind drivers to slow down. In the last eighteen years, that's from two thousand and three, there have been several changes in the Wild Harbor area. There have been at least forty new or renovated houses with all those construction trucks and additional traffic. The Shining Sea Bike Way was extended to North Falmouth and many bike riders get to the bike path by riding on Wild Harbor Road. There are also more year-round residents in the subdivisions off Wild Harbor Road and the New Silver, and the New Silver Beach community. The Wild Harbor Yacht Club has expanded its sailing lessons. I am very grateful that Wild Harbor Road has sidewalks for one mile. However, there are no sidewalks for seven tenths of a mile. There are always walkers on the sidewalk. Some biking families with small kids try to ride and share the sidewalk with pedestrians. Wild Harbor Road is dangerous to bike ride on, even for an experienced bike rider like me. The six tenths of a mile that has no sidewalks has an access path to New Silver Beach and a very busy Wild Harbor Yacht Club. There is not good sightline where this access path exits out onto Wild Harbor Road and it is just beyond a sign saying go thirty-five miles an hour. Another way to make Wild Harbor Road safer is to reduce the number of thirty-five mile signs. There are too many of them and they just encourage riders to drive thirty-five miles an hour. Believe it or not, there is one thirty-five mile sign within fifty feet of turning onto Wild Harbor Road from Old Main Road. Old Main Road is now thirty miles per hour. And then somebody turns off of Old Main Road and is encouraged to go thirty-five miles an hour on a section of Wild Harbor Road that has curves and lots of trees. There's another thirty-five mile sign on the half-mile section of Wild Harbor Road that has no sidewalks and it has a lot of bike and pedestrian traffic in the Silver Beach area of North Falmouth. I think both these signs should be removed right away. In summary, I would like the traffic advi, I would like the town to work with me and the Traffic Advisory Committee and the North Falmouth Village Association on recommending this. I applied for this because lower-speed signs on Wild Harbor Road, they should be thirty. And there, there are low, too many signs. It's, it's ridiculous. It's totally ridiculous. And then, and on Wild Harbor Road, we should put some share the road signs. If you have any questions?
That was very clear.
Mr. Chairman, pardon me, I'm not, I'm not sure we read the.
I was just about to do that after the fact, sorry.
Okay.
Don't we have to open a hearing on this also?
I would say we do.
Yes, I've moved to open the hearing.
Okay.
On this topic of reducing the speed limit on Wild Harbor.
I'm just going to read this notice that was in the enterprise on November fifth, 2021. In accordance with the provision of general law, chapter ninety, section eighteen, the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, November twenty-second, 2021, at seven thirty P.M. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, to make public testimony, to take public testimony and comment on the petition of Patricia Johnson et al. to accept the following speed regulation. Speed limit on Wild Harbor Road in North Falmouth, Mass shall be thirty miles per hour from Old Main Road to Lauren Road. Following the public hearing, the Select Board may vote to submit the proposed speed regulation to the Department of Transportation and the Registry of Motor Vehicles for their joint certification that such speed limit regulation is consistent with the public interest. Douglas C. Brown, Chair, Falmouth Select Board. Apologize for not having read that previous to Ms. Johnson's testimony, but that's okay.
That's okay.
Okay. So, any comments or questions from the Board? I think it's very clear. You've shown the intent of your request and the need for it.
You, you have to know that the Traffic Advisory Committee has recommended this to the town, I think, three times now, maybe two or three times.
Okay.
So, they're behind it. The North Falmouth Village Association is gearing, geared up to do a lot of safety issues in North Falmouth and this should be a part of one. And I really would like to work with the town on this petition.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. And if we vote this, I think those thirty-five mile an hour speed limit signs will come down. Too many of them anyway, right?
Well, there are way too many.
Okay.
Chairman, just to check and see whether there's any other comment.
In favor or against to this? Mr. Johnson?
Leonard Johnson, Wild Harbor Road. I don't always agree with my wife, but in this case, I am. I'd, I'd just like to emphasize one point that I think is not generally, it's not as widely understood as I think it should be. And that is that I have had experience on Wild Harbor Road when somebody, it happened about twice a year, I'm bicycling along and somebody will come in a car, go alongside me and say, get on the sidewalk. So, that's one of the reasons why we need share the road signs, because under Massachusetts law, cyclists have an equal right to the road as motorists. And obviously, not on Route one twenty-eight or even on twenty-eight and the, and the four-lane road. So, I think that's an important aspect of this. And there's just so many more cyclists out on the road these days and walkers for that matter. And so, that's what I would like to say. And I hope that, I have had a feeling in the last few years, and this may ruffle a few feathers, that when people have come, and this is not necessarily related to this, when people have come before town with ideas, often the town says no. And I do think that everybody would be better served, the public and people in Town Hall would be better served if the response was, if it is a good idea, let's see if we can make it happen. Well, thank you.
All right. Well, I hope that's the case.
Hi. My name is Cynthia Borger. I live at one ninety-four Old Main Road. I'm here basically because I'm involved with the North Falmouth Village Association and we are trying to put together a comprehensive plan of action to deal with the crisis in North Falmouth and the North Falmouth Village. I can't, I don't go up and down Wild Harbor Road that often, but I do walk constantly in the morning and late at night. And the speed with which I see people travel from the end of Pine Street through the intersection, it's not really an intersection, but it basically Pine Street ends, Wild Harbor Road starts, and people barely stop and they go incredible amounts of speed. And we've already had several accidents. This isn't just people saying, gee, you're interfering with our enjoyment. We believe that this is a severe safety issue. And I said, we're slowly getting our plans and proposals together and we'll be back here in front of you, I'm sure, in the not-too-distant future. But I certainly want to support this petition because I think it's, all these pieces come together and help for the public safety, help protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, I'm aware of several emails regarding this concern in this area and I live right there across the street and I've witnessed how many times people do come down Pine Street and zip right across and up Wild Harbor as if it's an extension of the road and vice versa, Wild Harbor down to Pine, but not even stopping. It's, it's almost like they just assume we know where they're going and they just zip right across.
And I've been killed that frequently and I'm not even on a bike.
Right. Okay. Here, one more.
Yes, sir.
My name's Raymond Glass. My wife and I are here to express our support for this move. We don't live on Wild Harbor Road, but we do live on Quaker Road and both of us use Wild Harbor Road every day. And it's interesting at times. It's a turny, twisty road in spots and, you know, definitely a lower speed limit would certainly help make it safer. It may also help keep people on their side of the road as well. Anyway, that's it. Just wanted to get up and speak a few words in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the Board or any more from the public?
I motion that we close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Okay. Any more discussion amongst the board?
No, but we have a statement that we're supposed to read, I think.
This is the actual motion appeared by the town attorney. The Select Board received a petition from Patricia Johnson at AL under the provisions of General Law, Chapter 90, Section 18, to adopt a speed limit of thirty miles per hour on Wild Harbor Road from Old Main Road to Lauren Road. In accordance with said statute, Select Board issued proper public notice and held a public hearing on November 2nd, 2021. And upon the evidence presented and the public comments received at the public hearing, Select Board has determined that the petition should be granted. Now therefore, the Select Board adopts the following speed regulation. Speed limit on Wild Harbor Road in North Falmouth, Mass shall be thirty miles an hour from Old Main Road to Lauren Road. Notice of this action shall be sent to the Department of Transportation and the Registry of Motor Vehicles for their joint certification that such speed limit is consistent with the public interest. The town's Department of Public Works shall erect appropriate signage, and the Police Department shall enforce the speed limit.
Patterson, second.
Here's the motion. If the board chooses to, so adopt.
I second.
I second it.
This is the motion. He seconded it, and so we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Appreciate that.
Thanks for that initiative.
We look forward to discussing the safety issues in that area further. And next we have wind turbine disposition status update. Mr. Suso.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have Finance Director Jennifer Mullen with us this evening, as well as outside counsel, Special Counsel Chris Morog, who I'm working closely with regarding the disposition of the wind turbines as the Select Board has so directed, and they have a PowerPoint update that they can present. Jennifer, I don't know if you or Chris prefer to lead, however you want to proceed.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. We're going to go through a PowerPoint, this is Attorney Chris Morog, that we've been working together in order to procure the removal of the wind turbines. So, just go over where we've been. A year ago, the town was informed that we could not procure the wind turbine demolition as an energy project. And what does that mean? It just meant that it would have been a simplified procurement. We would have issued one bid document, and they would have overseen the procurement. And they, after months of review, they declined to do that. So we engaged Special Counsel Attorney Morog to review the options of removal under Mass General Law. Then we met with the Clean Water Trust to update them on our plans to remove the turbines. And we were letting them know where we were at that time, trying to keep them, you know, in the loop with everything. And then we received permission from the Attorney General's Office to procure removal under Mass General Law, Section 3039m, which makes it a little bit more efficient and potentially less costly. And if you want to elaborate a little bit on that...
Sure. There's not a whole lot of precedent in the Commonwealth for removal of wind turbines, and, you know, it can turn into a very expensive and time-consuming process with potentially filed sub-bids, and then general bids, and all kinds of additional coordination. So we were able to work with the Attorney General's Office, the Bid Protest Unit, to have them agree that we can do it under Chapter 39m, which is essentially a horizontal procurement, does not require all the same level of detail for it to go out. So we've been working with them. We've got that approval. And then we contacted and been working with Weston and Sampson to prepare the specifications.
Yep. And we contracted with Weston and Sampson in May to produce the bid documents, to procure them under 3039m. Then we had site visits in June and July to review multiple details for the bid documents. We had numerous calls with the wastewater superintendent. We met with the licensed asbestos inspector to sign off on the draft specifications because we were issuing a bid. We needed to do that, even though we didn't think there was any asbestos. We needed to have the licensed inspector out there. And you want to...
Sure. And when the wind turbines got put in, they got integrated with the, if you will, power delivery for the wastewater treatment plant. So it became a little bit contorted, if you will. And the town, many years ago, entered into individual interconnection agreements with Eversource. Those transferred some responsibility to the town for certain equipment that Eversource had previously dealt with and maintained. So we're trying to deal with that as well, and we've developed a plan.
Yep. And so I'll walk you through a little bit of that. We were made of these interconnection agreements with Eversource over ten years ago. The agreements, as Attorney Morog just stated, transferred the liability and responsibility for the electrical equipment, for the turbines in wastewater treatment plant, from Eversource to the town. The wastewater superintendent met with Eversource and reviewed the documents with counsel. And we wanted to ensure, and at this point, we wanted to ensure that the removal of the turbines did not interfere with the electricity of the wastewater treatment plant or cause costly problems. We just didn't want to go ahead. We really needed to do due diligence. And so if we transfer the liability and the responsibility for the equipment back to Eversource, we will need to upgrade portions of the electrical equipment with Eversource's design. Do you want to talk a little bit about this? We spent a lot of time on this. It's kind of put a little bit of delay on what we were doing, and we worked closely with you on that.
Sure. So what ended up happening was there was a net meter, so when power would come in for the turbine, if extra power was put into the grid, it would meter it going both ways. There are different transformers and lines that were put in for that. Now that the turbines are going to be removed, things need to be cut and capped in a particular way. And also, the transformers and some of the main feeds into the wastewater treatment plant will need to be dealt with and upgraded to new standards. So when we met with the wastewater super, we determined that the best way to do that would be through the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant, so these projects could go forward kind of separately. So the goal is to remove the turbines and then separately deal with any upgrades that are necessary, so hopefully Eversource can take back control and responsibility and maintenance of those major lines coming in.
Is there a possibility that we can make plans for future connections? I was envisioning that the line from the turbines would just be cut, and we would have the meter disconnect and everything in place for future development of that site, potentially with solar panels, if we ever get another discharge option and those infiltration beds are no longer needed.
Right. Great point. What we've decided in discussions with Weston and Sampson, we're to leave the lines in place. We're going to leave the foundation from the turbines in place, so if anybody ever wanted to put a tower up for any reason, that they would be there and secure, and also leave the main lines that went back towards the wastewater treatment plant. But obviously, new switchgear and connections. I mean, even the stuff that's in there now is outdated, as being ten years old. So we would leave in the main infrastructure to not have to redo that again.
Okay.
We performed a final review of the bid documents with Weston and Sampson last Wednesday, and they're compiling a list of regional bidders on similar types of projects. Actually, UMass Dartmouth had removed a turbine, so we've contacted them, looking at their documents, and the bidders were in that, you know, in that project. And then we can at least engage bidders for this bid opening. We are initiating a meeting with the Clean Water Trust to review potential resolution of town's liability. So we want to meet with them, update them again before we go out to bid, so we'll be looking at that. And then we plan to issue bid documents subsequent to the meeting with the Clean Water Trust. And we're going, I'll have you talk a little bit about this. We're going to leave the bid open responses for ninety days to really try to get some economies of scale and get a lot of people to bid on that.
Yes. Because it's not something that happens every day in the Commonwealth, or for that matter, anywhere in the US, to be pulling turbines down, we want to have a long window to try to get as many interested parties available and to submit a bid, so we can get the best price for the town. In addition, we want to push this into a season where it might be better for them to actually remove it. And to that end, although we don't believe the actual removal of the turbines will take that long once it's started, we intend on giving a four-month window for them to complete the project. Because if they, for example, have some, if a company who's bringing a large crane onto the Cape or the islands can hook this up together with it and do two projects at the same time, hopefully we'll get a better bid. So the goal is to leave it out there for a fair amount of time to get parties interested in it, and then be able to determine the best way to remove it at the lowest price to the town.
Is there a flexibility also with the execution of the contract? Did you say it's four-month timeframe for removal?
Yes, from start to finish, that we're going to have bonds, so 100% bonds that guarantee performance and payment by the contractor. But, you know, depending on timing, when they want to get it done, we're going to give them a four-month window to perform the actual work.
You think that's enough? I'm just wondering about if there's some planning that they're doing with a site where these things might be going, rather than going into storage. I don't know. Is that negotiable, or...
Well, what we can certainly do is, when we put this out to bid, that's one other reason why we wanted to leave it out for ninety days, that we're hopeful that we'll get questions. So if someone says, "Hey, can you leave the procurement open for the time to perform for six months?" Because we may be able to, we'll certainly consider that, and then we'll probably extend the time for them to be able to perform the contract. But that needs to be done, for the most part, prior to submission of bids.
I see.
But if a contractor ends up getting into a situation, for whatever reason, we can always extend the timeframe for them to perform once they've started the work.
Okay. That might give a chance for somebody that might want to put them up and use them, so...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we will update the board with the results and options. So we just wanted to update you where we were with the wind turbines. We've done a lot of work over the past year.
And when do you think that this is going to be ready to be issued?
We're hopeful that we will be able to issue the bid maybe mid to late December.
Okay. Any questions from the audience?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Sam.
I just want to ask, actually, I had a citizen that asked me just a week ago, where we stand on our obligation to pay off the loan to the Clean Water Trust.
Want me to touch that?
Yeah.
So that was one of the points about the meeting with the Clean Water Trust?
Yeah, I gathered that. But where do we stand? Currently, we are paying off the loan. Is that right?
Not at this moment. We're still speaking with the Clean Water Trust.
Okay.
We're in kind of a standstill, if you will.
Pardon me, technically, that was a grant that you're referring to. It was a federal grant, so there are no payments, but we have an ongoing obligation. We are paying off a loan for Wind One, which was acquired through issuance of municipal bond borrowing. But this is a grant to Clean Water Trust that they're holding us responsible to repay.
Thank you.
Mr. Penner, do you have a question?
Yeah, kind of. I mean, we've all been following this for years, and it's unfortunate what happened and how much money we spent, and we're going to lose. And of course, I had always thought the idea of using it for a cell phone tower or a repeater for the police would be a good idea, but that technology is going away. It's going to be all that 5G poison. And then, I know this sounds crazy, but I have to say it anyway. I was driving by the other day, looking at them, and first off, that's one of the highest spots on Cape Cod, you know, probably, you know, out of a handful. And if you were on top of that thing, which is another 300 feet, I guarantee you, you could see both sides of Martha's Vineyard, Nantucket, and all the way down to Provincetown. And I grew up in Vermont again, and a lot of the ski areas to stretch out there, seasons do zip lines. And there's a perfect line of sight between there and Chappaquaite Beach. And as far as the other one goes, there's a perfect line of sight between there and Old Silver Beach with no obstructions. I don't know if anybody would be interested. I mean, they use them other places, but, you know, it would be just a great thing. I mean, a hundred bucks for a zip line down, we'll give you a free parking space. Anyway.
You could land right on the beach.
Absolutely. Or right next to it.
All right. We'll take that under advisement. See if that comes in back in the RFP.
Yeah, I mean, who knows?
You might want to respond to that.
Huh? Yeah.
You might want to respond to that. Put in your bid.
Yeah, I got a big roll of string in home.
All right. Well, thank you for that update. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a discuss and vote to establish a designated safety zone on Quissett Harbor Road from intersection with Zipwitz Road to Westerly, excuse me, to Westerly End, and to set twenty mile per hour as the maximum speed limit. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us on this. Can I dispense with this?
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Dana Roden, and I'm a Director and a Vice President of the Quissett Association, and also the President of the Quissett Harbor House Land Trust, which is the gateway property at the end of the road to the Knob, as well as the yacht club and beach club facilities there. This is an application, as you know, that's made under Chapter 90, Section 18B, so this is a different section of the speed limit general laws, which provides for the local adoption of designated twenty mile an hour safety zones under the right conditions following the Speed Zoning Manual's guidelines. And as you know from a prior presentation, this statute was adopted by the town at the June town meeting, I believe it was Article 14. The basis for our application is laid out in our written materials, and we primarily rely on those. But the basis falls in essentially two main areas. One concerns the conditions on the road, in large part due to the attraction of the Knob Sanctuary at the end of the road, as well as various community facilities on the Land Trust property and the boatyard, and I believe 224 moorings at Quissett. The second basis is what we believe to be the conformity of our application with the general guidelines in the Department of Transportation's Speed Zoning Manual, which has a section on this special statute, and I've attached that, I believe it's Attachment E. in the documents we're filing, provided to you. And just on a quick summary basis, so we won't spend too much time, going to the first factor, the conditions on the road that we believe would warrant a twenty mile an hour designated safety zone. First and foremost is the fact, I think that we're all aware of, is that the Knob is becoming an ever-more-popular destination, pretty much year-round at this point on any good day, although visitation obviously is particularly intense in the spring, summer, and early fall. Additionally, for better or for worse, probably mostly for the better, there is an increasingly heavy volume of walkers on the road in a configuration of the road where there's no sidewalk, and in fact, there's very little opportunity to get off the road anywhere. Pedestrians frequently don't observe any convention of facing the traffic or even walking single file in the summer, or walking on the same side of the road, and that just compounds the conditions. In addition, there's a very heavy volume of turnaround trips due to the dead end and the limited parking and the intense summer season popularity and visitation at the Knob. There are really only 33 legal parking spaces, which is why we've implemented a series of details from the Police Department on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, as well as private security help direct the traffic and hopefully gain cooperation from visitors. There are also a number of blind cursors at the boatyard parking area before the second parking lot, and I provide a little Google map that's marked up by hand to show you these locations. And then again, before the third lot, which is the lot at the end, which is also at the junction of Carey Lane and the old Quissett Harbor House driveway that belongs to the Land Trust. Parking at the boatyard forces cars over the center line, and the three parking lots have a heavy volume of children, dogs, and offloading of recreational beach equipment. And, you know, candidly, very often with little safety awareness, sometimes kids are just very excited to get out of the car and go. And finally, we have a phenomenon that's ever-increasing and has been advertised in Cape Cod Life, of people seeking the sunset view for about an hour around sunset, and it's like the Indy 500 at that point in time, which in and of itself is a very significant problem. And as a result, I think we, you know, very clearly fulfill the conditions from the guidelines, and that's really the second basis. Just quickly reading from the guideline, again, Attachment 10E in your documents, Section 10C that deals with designated safety zones states that they're intended to be used in areas where there are vulnerable road users who are likely to be present, such as parks and playgrounds. And that's exactly what we have in this location at the end of the road. The Knob Sanctuary attraction is well-known, it's obvious, and it's constantly promoted online and in the media, and again, for better or for worse, people... online and in the media, and again, for better or for worse. People, in the words of one person I've talked to about this, talks about the Knob being overloved and that is sort of the problem we're trying to cope with. So the areas of potential conflict that this provision Section Eighteen B is intended to deal with are pretty obvious here and they're well beyond any one single condition. Given the three parking areas, the boatyard driveway, the dead end, and turnaround at the last parking area. And the intersection with Carey Lane and the Harbor House driveway that I described before. And finally, the last criterion is that the zone be over a quarter of a mile and it's about four tenths of a mile, so I believe we're in pretty perfect conformity with this statute. I also include a little bit of material about the rationale for twenty miles an hour as a speed zone. And that basically has to do with increasing the reaction time that drivers have to be able to respond to situations like this, as well as reducing the potential for personal injury or even death if, if there is an impact. So based on all of this, we're hoping for your approval. This has been kind of a long path. It started with the tack and then the discussion about the fact that the town would need to adopt this statute, which you did recommend to the town meeting in the spring, so most of you, except for Ms. Scott Price, have seen the supporting material once before. And so we're hoping for your approval of this designation in the interest of public safety, neighborhood safety, and frankly, support for the groups that are basically running a public recreation area on private property at private expense. So that's the hope behind this and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you have. You know, if you should grant this designation, the hope is that there might be some coordination about the placement of the signs with, you know, perhaps Officer Porter and a representative of the DPW. I don't think we'd be looking for extensive signage, but strategically placed signage.
Questions from the board for the petitioner?
Well, I would just like to start off. Sorry, Nancy.
Go ahead and then Nancy, okay?
Thank you.
I'd just like to start by thanking the trust for keeping that beautiful spot open to the public. I mean, it's a it's a remarkable place and your generation generosity is appreciated by so many people and I know my family's been there countless times and it's a place we love to go back to, so I'll start off by just thank you, thanking you for.
Well, thank you. It's not a well-understood labor of love, but it's a wonderful thing for all of us and we're happy to be a part of sharing it.
Thank you. And I think your request is a very legitimate one and your arguments in favor of it are quite sound and, you know, very objective as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As someone who runs and or walks two dogs on Quissett Harbor Road pretty much every day, I really, really urge the board to support Dana Roden's petition because I think this is really important and I think it is a matter of public safety and reducing the speed limits on that area is a really good start. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have a question for staff. Can you tell me the reason why this is on business and not a public hearing? Is it because it's not a, like a main road? Right, I understand it's not a hearing, but how?
Right, I think it has to do with these exact speed limit fits with the recently adopted regulation that the, the town meeting authorized the select board to adopt a safety zone at twenty miles an hour. Not a safety zone at thirty, a safety zone at twenty, but I'll let Frank elaborate.
Frank Duffy, Town Counsel. There's different statutes involved. The first one, public hearing under Chapter Ninety, Section Eighteen. That's to set a speed limit and you have to have a public hearing on that. This is to establish a safety zone under a different statute and you do not have a public hearing on that.
Okay, thank you for that. And the computer must be up on the.
Yeah, I think somebody moved the mouse and it woke up.
Sorry, I'm, I'm.
I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. Chair. I also personally love the Knob. It's where my husband proposed. It's a very special place to me. And when I had my students come from out of town this summer, they all wanted to see it because they had heard about it and I, I did not want them to ride their bikes from the SCA campus there. I drove them there because of these exact issues. I know how to be careful and walk around there, but these students coming in had no idea, so I, I think this is a a great addition to our community to keep it, keep everybody safe.
Okay, well, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I motion that the select board has received a petition. I have to read the whole thing, right?
Yes.
Okay. The select board has received a petition from the Quissett Association Incorporated to establish a safety zone on Quissett Harbor Road from its intersection with Zipwistit Road to the Westerly End and to set twenty miles an hour as a maximum speed limit. The safety zone is authorized by Master of Law, Chapter Ninety, Section Eighteen B, as accepted by the town by the affirmative vote on Article Fourteen at the June twenty twenty-one special town meeting. The select board makes the following findings regarding said section of Quissett Harbor Road. One, there is a heavy volume of pedestrians visiting picturesque Quissett Harbor and the Knob, particularly in the summer. Two, there are no sidewalks or shoulders for pedestrian safety. Three, there are three blind curves along said section of Quissett Harbor Road. Four, there is often heavy vehicle traffic along said section of Quissett Harbor Road. And five, the safety zone is necessary for pedestrian safety. Therefore, the select board acting under the authority of Master General Law, Chapter Ninety, Section Eighteen B, as accepted by Article Fourteen of the June twenty twenty-one special town meeting, hereby establishes a safety zone on Quissett Harbor Road from its intersection with Zipwistit Road to the Westerly End and sets the maximum speed at twenty miles an hour. The Department of Public Works shall erect appropriate signage. The Family Police Department shall enforce the speed limit.
Second. Patterson, second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this?
Scott Price, aye.
You may ask for comments in the public.
Public comment, even though it's not a public hearing?
Well, it's not, we just, all issues, we allow people to comment. All right.
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Very well. Thank you very much for bringing that to us.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great suggestion.
Next, we have a long list of license renewals. Ten minutes to do it. Would you like to read it?
I'll read the one section.
Okay.
I'm not sure I can get through them all without.
Thank you, Frank.
My voice cracking, so. Okay. Is this a hearing? No, this is just, this is just licenses, right?
That's a good question, actually.
Yep, annual license.
I move approval of the following: All Alcohol Restaurant Licenses. Excuse me, guys.
Gentlemen, we're still going, carrying on here.
Mark.
Mr. Fennerin, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, All Alcohol Restaurant Licenses. Ninety-nine Restaurant, Thirty Davis Straits. Anchor Ale House, One Hundred Davis Straits. Anejo Mexican Bistro, One Eighty-eight Main St. Street. Black Dog Heights Cafe, Four Sixty-five Grand Avenue. Blue Fins, Two Ninety-five Main Street. Bucatina's Restaurant and Wine Bar, Seven Nathan Ellis Highway. Sea Salt Wine Bar and Grill, Seventy-five Davis Straits. Cape Cod Country Club, Forty-eight Theater Drive. Captain Kidd, Seventy-seven Water Street. Casa Vallarta, Seventy Davis Streets. Chappaquaite Grill, Four Ten West Falmouth Highway. Conference Table, Two O Five Worcester Court. DJ's Family Sports Bar, Eight Seventy-two Main Street. Epic Oyster, Seventy County Road. Estia, One Seventeen Main Street. Glass Onion, Thirty-seven North Main Street. Golden Swan, Three Twenty-three, Three Twenty-five Main Street. Jack's Restaurant and Bar, Three Twenty-seven Gifford Street. Liam McGuire's, Two Seventy-three Main Street. New Peking Palace, Four Fifty-two Main Street. Asteria, La Ceveta, One Thirty-three Main Street. Pickle Jar Kitchen, One Seventy Main Street. Cohog Republic Dive Bar, Ninety-seven Spring Bars Road. Quarter Deck, One Sixty-four Main Street. Quicksold Tavern, Twenty-nine Railroad Avenue. Second Asset Golf Club, One Thirty-two Falmouth Woods Road, Falmouth Woods Road, excuse me. Shipwreck, Two Sixty-three Grand Avenue. Silver Lounge, Four Twelve North Falmouth Highway. Simply Divine Pizza Company, Two Seventy-one Main Street. Sopranos by the Sea, Two Eighty-six Grand Avenue. Sweet Rice, One Sixty-seven T-Ticket Highway. The Pizza Bar, One Forty-six Sandwich Road. Timber, Twenty-three Town Hall Square. Water Street Kitchen, Fifty-six Water Street.
And before we vote, just a clarification.
Need a second.
Just a clarification. We see a lot of emails from residents in support of extended hours for Shipwreck, but I don't see any requests for that. Is that something that might come to us later? Are you, have you heard anything of that?
I don't recall that specifically. Mr. Chairman, we'll double check and see.
I just wonder why we received all that email correspondence from so many supporters of that. There's at least a half a dozen. And I don't see anything actually changing here. Maybe they have future plans and they're just putting it out into their patrons and it's something we'll see later.
Could well be.
Okay. Very well. I just wanted to let the public know that that action is not before us here tonight.
All right, a second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve all these alcohol, all alcohol restaurants. Is, take a vote by roll call?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Very well.
I'll read the next set, Sam, don't worry. All Alcohol Package Store, Falmouth Wine and Spirits, Three Twenty-two Palmer Avenue. Lisa Liquors doing business as Family Foods, Three Fifty East Falmouth Highway. Capes, Twenty-one Spring Bars Road. Kenyon's Market Incorporated, Seven Sixty-nine East Falmouth Highway. Murphy's Package Store, Four Ten West Falmouth Highway. North Falmouth Liquors, Three Sixty-two North Falmouth Highway. Old Barn Package Store, Twenty Lescombe Avenue. RJ's Variety and Liquors Incorporated, One Seventy-four Sandwich Road. T-Ticket Market Incorporated, One Twenty-five T-Ticket Highway. And West Falmouth Market, Six Twenty-three West Falmouth Highway.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
I can do the next.
Taylor, aye.
Very well.
I'll do the next.
I'll, I'll keep going.
Okay.
All Alcohol Club, Am Vets, Three Thirty-six Palmer Avenue. Cape Verdian Club of Falmouth, One Twenty-six Sandwich Road. Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, Twenty-five Sportsman Lane. Green Pond Yacht Club, Three Sixty-six Minhot Road. Midway Trap and Skeet, Two Eighty-four Old Meeting House Road. Woods Hole Golf Club, One Thirty Quissett Avenue.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Would you like me to do some?
Sure. I can get through the short ones and you can do the last one.
And you could just put them all together and we can vote on them as a group. You just have to.
Oh, all these short ones? Okay.
Yeah, you can create the subtitle or announce the subtitle and then the restaurant center, but then the next subtitle and keep going.
Can do. Thank you. All Alcohol Inholder, Kuna Messet Inn, Three Eleven Gifford Street. Seacrest Concessionaire LLC, Three Fifty Quaker Road. Wine and Malt Restaurant, Crab Apples, Five Fifty-three Palmer Avenue. Falmouth Cinema Pub, One Thirty-Seven T-Ticket Highway. New Golden Dynasty, Twenty-five Davis Straits. Papa Gino's, Fifty-six Davis Straits. Pizza One and Subs Two, Seven Sixty-nine East Falmouth Highway. Seafu Sam's, Three Fifty-six Palmer Avenue. Wine and Malt Package Store, Holly Park Variety Incorporated, Five Eighty-A Route Twenty-eight A. Jack and the Beanstalk, Eight Hundred Gifford Street. Rapid Refill, Four Thirty-five Palmer Avenue. Wild Harbor General Store, Two Hundred Old Main Road. And Windfall Market, Seventy-seven Scranton Avenue. Wine, Malt, and Cordial Inholder, Country Fair, Three Nineteen Main Street. Winery Brewery Pouring License, Aquatic Brewing, Six Sixty-one Main Street. Cape Cod Winery, Four Oxbow Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
And common victualers? Ninety-nine Restaurant, Thirty Davis Straits. Am Vets, Three Thirty-six Palmer Avenue. Anchor Ale House, One Hundred Davis Straits. Anejo Mexican Bistro, One Eighty-eight Main Street. Blended Berry, Fifty-six Davis Straits. Betsy's Diner, Four Five Seven Main Street. Black Dog Heights Cafe, Four Sixty-five Grand Ave. Blue Fins, Two Ninety-five Main Street. Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, Seven Nathan Ellis Highway. Burger King, One Eleven T-Ticket Highway. Cape Cod Bagel, Four Nineteen Palmer Avenue. Cape Cod Country Club, Forty-eight Theater Drive. Captain Kidd, Seventy-seven Water Street. Casa Vallarta, Seventy Davis Straits. Sea Salt Wine Bar and Grill, Seventy-five Davis Straits. Chappaquaite Grill, Four Ten West Falmouth Highway. Conference Table, Two O Five Worcester Court. Country Fair, Three Nineteen Main Street. Crab Apples, Five Fifty-three Palmer Ave. Bianello's, Six Eighty-nine Main Street. BJ's Family Sports Pub, Eight Seven Two Main Street. Dogs and Hogs, Seven Eight One Main Street. Epic Oyster, Seventy County Road. Estia, One Seventeen Main Street. Falmouth Cinema Pub, One Thirty-seven T-Ticket Highway. Golden Swan, Three Twenty-three and Three Twenty-five Main Street. Green Pond Yacht Club, Three Six Six Monot Road. Jack's Restaurant and Bar, Three Twenty-seven Gifford Street. Le Bonjour, Four Twenty East Falmouth Highway. Liam McGuire's, Two Seventy-three Main Street. Mary Ellen's Bakery, Eight Twenty-nine Main Street. McDonald's, Two Sixty-three T-Ticket Highway. New Golden Dynasty, Twenty-five Davis Straits. New Peking Palace, Four Fifty-two Main Street. Asteria La Cevita, One Thirty-three Main Street. Papa Gino's, Fifty-six Davis Straits. Percy's Place Falmouth, Percy's Place Falmouth, Forty North Main Street. Pickle Jar Kitchen, One Seventy Main Street. Pizza One Subs Two, Seven Sixty-nine East Falmouth Highway. Cohog Republic Dive Bar, Seventy-nine Spring Bars Road. Quarter Deck Restaurant, One Sixty-four Main Street. Quicksold Tavern, Twenty-nine Railroad Avenue. Second Asset Golf Club, One Thirty-two Falmouth Woods Road. Seafood Sam's, Three Fifty-six Palmer Avenue. Shipwreck, Two Sixty-three Grand Ave. Silver Lounge, Four Twelve North Falmouth Highway. Simply Divine Pizza Company, Two Seventy-one Main Street. Sopranos by the Sea, Two Eighty-six Grand Ave. Starbucks, Eleven Davis Straits. Sweet Rice, One Sixty-seven T-Ticket Highway. Talk of the Town Diner, Five Eighty-seven Quaker Road. Thai Kitchen, Two Fifty-eight T-Ticket Highway. Conference Table, Two O Five Worcester Court. Timber, Twenty-three Town Hall Square. The Pizza Bar, One Forty-six Sandwich Road. Water Street Kitchen, Fifty-six Water Street. And Woods Hole Golf Club, One Thirty Quissett Ave.
Second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
I just got really hungry.
Inholders. Want to go back? Okay.
Give you a break?
Sure.
All right. Inholders License, Falmouth Inn, Eight Twenty-four Main Street. Kuna Messet Inn, Three Eleven Gifford Street. Seacrest Concessionaire LLC, Three Fifty Quaker Lane. Shoreway Acres, Fifty-nine Shore Street. Entertainment License, Am Vets, Three Thirty-six Palmer Avenue. Anchor Ale House, One Hundred Davis Straits. Bucatina Restaurant and Wine Bar, Seven Eleven Ellis Highway. Nathan Ellis Highway. Cape Verdian Club of Falmouth, One Twenty-six Sandwich Road. Captain Kidd, Seventy-seven Water Street. Casa Vallarta, Seventy Davis Straits. Conference Table, Two O Five Worcester Court. Kuna Messet Inn, Three Eleven Gifford Street. Jack's Restaurant and Bar, Three Twenty-seven Gifford Street. Liam McGuire's, Two Seventy-three Main Street. New Peking Palace, Four Fifty-two Main Street. Cohog Republic Dive Bar, Ninety-seven Spring Bars Road. Quarter Deck, One Sixty-four Main Street. Quicksold Tavern, Twenty-nine Railroad Avenue. Second Asset Golf Club, One Thirty-two Falmouth Woods Road. Seacrest Concessionaire LLC, Three Fifty Quaker Road. Shipwreck, Three Sixty-three Grand Avenue. Silver Lounge, Four Twelve North Falmouth Highway. Simply Divine Pizza Company, Two Seventy-one Main Street. Sopranos by the Sea, Two Eighty-six Grand Avenue. The Conference Table, Three O Five Worcester Court. The Pizza Bar, One Forty-six Sandwich Road. Woods Hole Golf Club, One Thirty Quissett Avenue.
Second.
Couple of, couple of little, there was Two Six Three Grand Ave for Shipwreck and Two O Five Worcester Court for the conference table.
Thank you.
And all in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Thank you.
I'll read the last ones.
Okay.
Sunday Entertainment License, Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, Seven Nathan Ellis Highway. Captain Kidd, Seventy-seven Water Street. Casa Vallarta, Seventy Davis Straits. Kuna Messet Inn, Three Eleven Gifford Street. Liam McGuire's, Two Seventy-three Main Street. Second Asset Golf Club, One Thirty-two Falmouth Woods Road. Seacrest Concessionaire LLC, Three Fifty Quaker Lane. Shipwreck, Two Sixty-three Grand Avenue. Sopranos by the Sea, Two Eighty-six Grand Avenue. Automatic Amusement Devices Licenses, DJ's Family Sports and Pub, Eight Seventy-two Main Street. Falmouth Cinema Pub, One Thirty-seven T-Ticket Highway. Pizza One and Subs Two, Seven Sixty-nine East Falmouth Highway. Cohog Republic Dive Bar, Ninety-seven Spring Bars Road. Seacrest Concessionaire LLC, Three Fifty Quaker Road. Class Two Used Cars Licenses, Braga Auto Sales, Two Twenty-seven R Main Street. Falmouth Salvage, Nine Hayway Road. Falmouth Pier Thirty-seven, Sixty-four Scranton Avenue. Frank's Auto Sales, Four Forty-two R and Four Forty-E East Falmouth Highway. O'Hare Motors Incorporated, Fifty Spring Bars Road. Reen?
Right.
Reen, trucking? Thank you. Nine Hayway Road. Route Twenty-eight Auto. Route 28 Auto Center, 550 East Falmouth Highway. Sandy's Auto Sales, 45 Simpson Lane. And Vehicle for Hire License, White Thai Limousine, 292 T-Ticket Highway.
Second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Excellent.
I am so hungry now.
All right. Next we have discussion of possible contribution from Falmouth to increase funding to the Kid Pad Municipal Police Academy. I only brought this because we, at the assembly meeting last week, we were discussing whether or not to appropriate $170,000 for this current year to supplement the budget for the police training academy out at the Joint Base Cape Cod. This training academy was only begun, I don't know if you had a chance to read these other notes here, but it's only begun a few years ago in 2019. The initial idea was that a $50,000 grant from the county and one from the state, I guess. I'm not sure, but there was $102,000, $102,000 was the initial seed money to get it started with these couple of grants and some money from, $2,000 from somebody else. They expected the academy to be self-sustaining. And there was some consideration of the assembly several weeks ago when it was brought to us for the additional appropriation of the 170 plus another 200 and something for the second year, realizing that it was kind of started on a volunteer basis with police departments offering training. And that's not really sustainable, having volunteers do the training. So now they've got the full complement of training staff and they're realizing that it's not exactly sustainable. And their concerns among assembly members that they can't fund something that's not sustainable. Because the county government is actually akin to a small town. The revenues are very limited. I mean, they have high revenues now because the real estate market is so high because their income is all from the registry of deeds, from property transactions. So there's been some concern about the sustainability of it from assembly members. The, there was an audit done which showed that there hadn't been sufficient budgeting and consideration of actual expenses versus revenue. During this discussion last Wednesday, several assembly members raised a lot of concern about sustainability of the program, whether or not we could continue it. I asked Mr. Suso to put this on for discussion just to see if there was some other options at that time. And then subsequent to the meeting, we received more information during the meeting. Chief Karnes, who's one of the directors of the institute, mentioned that there was a memorandum of understanding between the management of the police academy and the county, which was not actually obvious to us, and I hadn't seen it before. But we received the memorandum of understanding this next day afterwards because Chief Karnes had raised the fact that this thing is in existence, although in his opinion, not fully executed. It had been signed by some of the parties, but not actually implemented by the, by the county. And in the memorandum of understanding, in my reading of it, it makes it very clear that county staff and officials in the county government pretty much offered to do the financial oversight and the supervision of it financially. And the police officials that are running the academy offered to do the training. So it was very surprising to me to see that memorandum, which I don't know why it wasn't really completely executed or followed through with. But so it really puts the responsibility back on the county. And there was a lot of criticism of the people running the police academy at the time. And I felt it was really unfortunate that that happened when we weren't really fully informed of all the information. Now, this is on here today only because I was just looking for ways to try to get some support for the police academy's continued operation. I don't know that this board is likely prepared to volunteer any extra money. It was just a discussion that I wanted to have because we're going to go back and talk about this again. Not this coming, not this week, but a week from Wednesday, we'll discuss it again, whether or not to supplement the budget. In light of the memorandum of understanding, I'm going to hope that other assembly members are more supportive and have changed their position of being critical of the management of the organization. Chief Dunn has said that he's petitioning the state to take over the police training academy's finances because all other police training academies are run and funded by the state. And it would be only fair and appropriate that municipal have that same option. I don't know why we had to start this on our own, but we need the training facility. We've got, of the 60 people that are going to be in it, I think there's 41 that are local on Cape Cod that will be going to local departments. So this next class is really super critical in my mind. The second class, maybe less critical, but I'd like to keep this thing open. And I'd just like the board to be aware of this situation. And I'm not going to ask for any kind of vote or anything tonight because I know this is new to this board. But I just wanted to raise the issue and make you aware that if there's not a successful outcome in two weeks and some path forward that's sustainable, maybe I might come back to the board and ask if this town would be willing to consider an additional contribution. I've been told that having this training on the Cape saves towns significant money. And so it may be worth it for us to consider something like right now, I think it's $3,900 per academy trainee. Maybe if we were to offer to kick in another $500 per trainee, that would lead it towards some sustainability. I hope it doesn't come to that. I think it's a state thing that should be funded through the state. But I'm just putting it out there so we'll be aware of it at this time. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to readily answer them.
Yes, sir. Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, that I'm not certain exactly what they charge for tuition. I just don't have that in front of me. But one of the things they could consider is raising the amount of tuition for each one of the cadet candidates for the academy, along with, of course, the possibility of the state stepping up and providing funding. The only other thing that jumped out at me was the debate I saw occurring over the same sort of general timeframe where the county has over $40 million in ARPA funding, which is well over 10 times what the town of Falmouth receives from the federal government for ARPA. And these are first responders. So I'm not certain why the county wouldn't want to consider utilizing, at least in the short term, if all else failed, some of this ARPA money to facilitate the provision of additional first responders on the Cape, at least as a stopgap while they pull together whatever they needed to do. So I just pass that along as well.
Certainly. Good point. Yes, Mr. Patterson.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not inclined to help mend this problem that's been created. I don't think it's a liability that should just flow down to the town because it sounds to me like there's some fiduciary irresponsibility in running this academy. But I do think that it's in our interest to basically pay the cost of having our officers trained at this facility. So going forward, I would be more than happy to pay a higher tuition fee or whatever it is. I mean, from transportation alone, sending somebody off Cape adds up pretty quickly. And if you have to pay for them to spend the night or several nights, you know, that's a cost that the town would bear anyway. And then there's, there's then the questions of salaries and such. But I'm, you know, I want to hear more. And certainly, if the county has other sources of revenue that could cover this cost, which we had no idea was accruing, I'd like to hear that because it doesn't seem right to me.
There's no doubt that the county can afford to cover it in the short term. The question is whether or not, long term, it'll be sustainable. So that's why I'm bringing this to us, just to have the information. And I believe that $3,900 is the tuition. I think that's mandated controlled by the state, you know, as well as, I think all the aspects of the training and the conditions and the controls are mandated by the state. This would be, if we wanted to consider it, it would be a voluntary contribution just to keep a local option. But I hope it doesn't come to that, and I don't think it will.
It's good to know, though. It's good to have on the radar.
Okay. That is it for that unless there's any other questions. And then we have the review and vote and approve minutes of meetings, five minutes. Yep. The minutes that I read, I found to be substantially correct and.
Yeah, I think I just had one, maybe two small things.
Okay.
On the November 8th minutes, under administrative orders, so number two D, it has, my name is just Price instead of Scott Price.
Okay.
I know I'm a stickler for my name, but.
I had a couple of, go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, one more. Okay, so on the fifth page, under three, vote to adopt new mooring regulations. Towards the end of the page, it says Scott Price said that she knows people who live on houseboats because they cannot afford to live in town year, that should be round. It says a year found.
Okay.
Very small typo.
You got those couple?
Yeah.
And then on the next page, about halfway down, it says Sheila, one slash in slash u. I don't actually know what that means.
Yeah, neither do I. I saw that too.
Okay.
Go back to that. I think that means last name unknown.
Oh, well, that makes so much sense. Okay. Thank you.
We'll see if we can, yeah.
Well, if that's the case, it's okay, but maybe, maybe it should be spelled out so other people know.
And that's all I had.
Oh, I have a couple of edits. And on that same page, in the next paragraph where it says Cricket Warner, Woods Hole Resonant, Houseboat Owner, seems to me it should say this mooring field could be full of houseboats. Otherwise, it doesn't make much sense the way it was worded. And then the, next to the last paragraph there, reading down to the last sentence, the pump out log would be in there. This is the system they have. They could take sewage to shore to empty the log each time. That's one of the options that they could have to using the pump out boat, but it's not clear that what they're.
Is that really what it said? Empty the log?
No, it says to empty and log each time.
Oh, empty and log, right.
And then I have one more correction that I thought would be of value on page one. Under announcements and the second bullet, I guess, number 15, November 15th, town meeting comments. It says they are asking, this is right in the middle, they are asking attendees to wear masks and take them off when speaking at the microphone. Masks and sanitizing implements will be provided as needed. On the main floor of Lawrence, there are 650, I think it should be chairs because folding chairs really means something quite different. Get rid of that folding.
You should just say seats.
Yeah. Or seats. That's fine, too. And with those edits, I would move that we approve the minutes of Monday, November 18th, 2021, and release for public access.
Scott Price, second.
And I just had one concern about the language in the motion to adopt the fee. The motion is to support adopt a policy that will recommend the increase of funds received by the town from the adoption of the local impact fee described in general law to be appropriated by town meeting to the Falmouth Forefront Housing Fund. Well, that's the second one. But the first one, I felt like wasn't really clear. This data policy would need to be forthcoming and noted to some of the surge of people. No, that's not the.
Well, was it an action that we took?
The other motions, Chair Brown motion to select board a policy that will recommend all funds received by the town from the local short-term room rental tax. I don't think it should say room rental. I think short-term rental excise tax. And I don't know if we need to define that anymore, but it doesn't apply to hotel and motel room rental. So the language could be just clarified to say that it's for.
Short-term rental is the term used in the statute, so that, that's sufficient.
And we'll just remove the word room then. Do you think that makes sense?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. So with those changes, Ms. Dr. Taylor, do you have any comments on the minutes?
I do not.
Okay. Well, with that, we have a motion. All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Very good. Individual Select Board members.
Oh, and we got another.
The November 15th meeting.
November 15th.
I did not have any edits to that one.
Yeah, I need to even. So with that, I move to approve and release for public access the minutes of Monday, November 15th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Very well. Now, individual select board members' reports.
Yeah, so several meetings ago, I, we had a presentation from Linda Clark about their upcoming project off Main Street. And I said that I was going to follow up with that. And I realized it's something I just have to do a better job at as a select board member is that I ask a lot of questions via email and in the office, but I don't ask them publicly so people know that these questions are being asked and answered. So, Mr. Suso, could you give us an update on the status of that, that project? I believe it's gone to the zoning board.
It has gone through the zoning board to the best of my, I believe they've given a conditional approval for that project. So it seems to be within the timeline that they had set up so that they can apply for state funding assistance. So I believe with the assistance of the ZBA, that goal has been accomplished. And we, we are hopeful that they'll get that supplementary funding as well.
Great. Thank you.
No, they did get a lot of comments for having a very thoroughly executed packet. So I think that helped their case quite a bit.
I did actually see it, but I just wanted to do a better job of asking that publicly.
Good idea. Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
Okay, two items. The Cape Cod and Islands Selectmen and Councilors Association meeting was this past Friday. And the focus was on the PFAS compounds, excuse me, that are in our aquifer and from various sources. And I did request that we have a report from our own water treatment director, department head.
Superintendent.
Superintendent, yes. Because we have multiple sources in town and I want to make sure that we understand what we're treating and assure the public of, you know, what kind of drinking water quality we have. On Cape, there are a number of municipalities where the numbers are above the currently recognized safety level. So it's, it's something that we have to deal with now. And just, I think for my purposes, I'd like to know, you know, just what are the treatment techniques that we might use either on our wastewater, at our wastewater treatment facility or where we have a well that has PFAS contamination? What's being done with that water before it's injected into our water supply? So those are just a topic I'd like to see addressed in the future.
I could just comment on that also. We do have some sort of a commitment on behalf of the Air Force to pick up the tab for the mashby contamination. And I believe that they offered to help us with the fresh pond contamination. Did that become an issue? And I pointed out at the county level that it's already an issue and our well is already shut down. We haven't completely identified the source, but there's a suspicion that it may be also emanating from Joint Base Cape Cod. So I'd like to follow up with them and see what exactly their commitment is. Because I understand that the treatment for PFAS contamination is carbon filtration. And that would be another, at least a few million dollars for us. I don't know what it would cost, somewhere between three and 10, depending on what's involved. And we might need to look at potentially putting that kind of carbon filtration on all of our well sources. Or consider, you know, closely monitoring them until that stuff comes into play. So I'd like that to be part of that discussion as well.
Okay. And the second is just to mention that I did attend the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Dalton Watering on your behalf. And I have to say from the presentations of his scout leaders and his fellow scouts, he is a respected and exemplary citizen. And really a reflection of the kind of programs that Troop 38 offers and, you know, and the kinds of values that they reinforce in those young people. So just.
Excellent.
Yeah, it was a great, great court of honor and something that we can be proud of.
So proud to have some of these Eagle Scouts from Falmouth. It's just amazing how many Falmouth produces.
And the significant projects that they do in Dalton's case. Created a kiosk on the Wacoip Bay Estuary and Research Center. It's an informational kiosk, but then he cleared some viewpoints out onto Wacoip Bay itself for people that come there that has visitors. So it's a nice project.
Excellent. Dr. Taylor, do you have anything you want to comment on?
I do not.
Okay. I just wanted to follow up again on the assembly meeting of this past week. We had a pretty interesting dynamic going on between the assembly and the founding commissioners. So as Mr. Suso mentioned earlier, we have that $41 million plus that's in the county coffers for ARPA funds. And the commissioners were. and the commissioners were under the impression that they were in sole control of that fund and that they would disperse it at their discretion with little or no input from the assembly. And they have a legal counsel's opinion that they have the right to do so. The assembly also sought counsel in a timely fashion and we had an opinion from Attorney Troy, who represents the assembly, that in his opinion, whether it's ARPA funds or tax funds or registry funds, it's all funds and it's all subject to appropriation through the standard process, which is by, what do you call it?
The legislative body, in this case, the assembly.
Right. So whether it starts with the assembly or the commissioners, it needs to be approved by both in the opinion of Attorney Troy. So we're at kind of a crossroads where we have two completely divergent legal opinions about how to proceed. And so the assembly will be taking that up again at our next meeting a week from Wednesday. And I just find it to be a very interesting time in county government that we have this completely opposite dynamic. So it's going to be very interesting and I'll be looking forward to reporting the outcome of it.
As I can appeal to the Attorney General.
Well, there's also the chairman, the chair of the Board of Regional Commissions, Ron Bergstrom. In response to the outpouring of comments, I attended the meeting prior to the assembly with the commissioners and I voiced my concerns and opinions about it and other assembly members did as well. And in response to that, commissioner offered that perhaps there'll be some other sort of a process where, what they had first proposed was that they would assemble a committee to recommend projects. Say for instance, if the town of Falmouth wanted to bring a project to the county, you'd bring it to this committee and then the committee would bring it to the commissioners and they would approve it. And then Mr. Bergstrom proposed that in light of all the feedback he was receiving at that meeting, maybe they would come up with another system where the committee would bring it to the assembly and then the assembly would vote it up or down and then send it to the commissioners for final signature. Although Mr. Troy opined that that's not a normal process and we already have a process in place,